All right, the time is now 7:30 and I would like to call this regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees, or Kate Lynn, could you provide a little call?
Yes, Trustee Earl.
Here.
Trustee Edlin.
Here.
Trustee Gagani.
Here.
Trustee Humphreys.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton is absent today. And President Greer.
Here. Thank you very much. And I just realized, I think, do you have the thing?
Yeah.
It's in here somewhere.
It's just all on order now.
I'm not exactly sure where. Um, oh, here it is.
Yeah, I think you just have it on the box. There you go.
Good. All right. Um, I would like to welcome our visitor. Thank you for showing your interest in the library. Appreciate it. Um, all right, we're now on to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Minutes. Did anybody have any questions or comments regarding the minutes from June?
I did not.
I did not.
Can we approve the minutes?
I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes that has been seconded. If all are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Five, the June 2018 Financial Report and July 2018 Invoices.
And you will see that you have a revised invoice edit list. Um, and it turns out that AT&amp;T very nicely had sent us a bill that did not show a previous credit on it, and so there was no balance pay for this month, so we went ahead, contacted them, confirmed that that was indeed the case, and pulled that invoice from the list. So you have an updated list here that has that amount taken off. It's $685,000. So that is the only difference between what is in your packet and what is on the revised invoice listing. Other than that, your revenues now reflect the first property tax major installment, so that's all those June payments that came in and were posted in July for the library. And then you can also see in the expenses that the transfer was made, oh, and in the fund balances, the transfer was made to the Library Capital Replacement Fund. So those are the biggies for the, everything else there, you will see those larger invoices from the furniture that you had approved at the last meeting. The amounts were 50 percent in most cases, 50 percent of the invoice at the time of the order, and then the balance due to Congress.
All right, any questions or comments on the financials? Without the motion that, uh, June 2018 Financial Report into July, we could present the kind of, please. Second. All right, we have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Five, the Financial Matters, that has been seconded. Kate Lynn, could you provide a little call?
Trustee Earl.
Yes.
Trustee Edlin.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
President Greer.
Yes. The financial matters have been approved in June. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Do we have any public comment on Agenda Items? Any of you? Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Comment on Other Library Business. Ted.
Right, um, I understand the, I'm not sure if it was the last one, because the, I don't see that it knows until they get posted later on, but I saw that the collection in the library, the books was down 6.3 percent, and I think the audio and the video was done even larger percentages from that. And I know that there's a policy for going through and weeding out things that aren't used, but what worries me is that the collection shrinks to just being current best sellers, that you lose a lot of depth in the collection, and that could actually limit the value that people see in the library. And part of what, people will come to the library, they'll discover things that they didn't know that they wanted, not just, you know, order off of Amazon kind of things. So, um, I, I know that you've got a number of programs reaching out to people in the community. Couple months ago, I made the comment that I think it would be helpful to reach out to people that don't use the library, because the best thing would be if everybody who lived in Downers Grove was using its library, and part of that may be because there's things here that they don't use, so I hope you're reaching out to them, listen carefully for what should be in the collection that we don't have right now, and, and if you can, increase the depth and scope of coverage for the collection.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. You want to respond to that?
Of course. Um, we've been going through some pretty major weeding projects right now, and you'll see that the commensurate rebuild of the collections also happened within the next few months. There, there is always a cycle to this for us. We've had a couple major weeds, and I think Jen can speak to a bunch of these.
Two large print weeds that we had was our magazine collection, so we keep the current plus two years, so you have a large withdrawal in June and December. And the kids' room also, they actually got rid of the reference collection, and they, what they do with the reference books was they've given them to schools, they have increased circulating copies of books because they've transferred them into the circ, um, the circulation collection, and some of those books have gone to the level schools, so.
When you say they go into the circulating collection, does that mean that they're, those same books are still available, but they're just-
They can be checked out.
But they can be checked out?
Yeah.
But then that wouldn't be a net change in the-
That's true.
Silence, right?
But in a lot of cases, the reference materials have started to go to online databases that don't count in our materials collection, or count as a single database that takes the place of what had been, you know, World Book Encyclopedia is now World Book Online. So you have that kind of low in the collection also. Making room for new stuff is the, the bottom line on most of it, is making room for some new things.
Okay. Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item Eight A, Strategic Plan Review. Bring us up to speed on this.
I think, I think Dave just, just said it, um, the big, um, that was my thought when I had all of the department heads, everybody went in and put in what they have done for, so far, on the strategic plan, and it was amazing to see how much progress we have actually made in so many of these areas. I'm gonna pull it up here. We've got, try not to get busy while I get down to the right page here.
Seventeen.
I'm gonna make it larger for everybody to read. So we have made some really fantastic progress, and we have done, we've hit all of our targets that were through June of 2018. We've made progress on many more. Some of the highlights I wanted to hit for you was our book club kits, thanks to our foundation for their support of that. We are also doing some, the, um, the restricted use cards for our homeless patrons, also addressing the, how to get cards to teens who don't have a parent with them. These were all items that were here, and including addressing staffing needs, and you again see the follow-up report to what was done this time last year, does appear in your packet again this year, just to, to keep us on board with what's going on with the staffing and how that is evolving. We are looking to do a lot of more partnerships. The change that we made from having the Public Relations Manager doing adult programming to having an adult program coordinator has kind of affected how far I think we're going to get on a couple of these. The civic engagement, um, programs and doing a program series may actually stretch. The planning process is definitely underway, but the actual programs themselves probably will not happen until 2019, some of that being having different personnel. Also, you will see as you look through, we've made some changes on the point person for a number of these with the changes to the communication, having a communications coordinator, and also the community engagement coordinator, that we are currently finalizing a job ad for that position in lieu of having a public relations manager. So that's all part of that, bringing the communications and community engagement team into the administration area. One of the things that we did make some really fantastic progress on that we had not anticipated is actually on handicap spaces. It is looking like we will be able to have two more handicap spaces actually on Forest Avenue near the long ramp, so that people who don't necessarily need a full wheelchair and have to have that full accessible space can have that preferred street parking right there, very close to the ramp, so that they can get in and out more effectively. So we had been talking to them about the idea of Curtis and increasing the number of handicap spaces there. There are a lot of different considerations, and it really does eat into the, the parking there, but we're, we're working with the village to find the best solutions possible, and that's been fantastic, having them as a partner for this. And as we had been talking just briefly before the meeting, a couple of us were making comments on the downtown, and it was good to hear from the village that they are planning a parking study in the near future, to really make sure that the parking in the downtown remains at the level to address the concerns that people expressed in our strategic planning process, as well as their comprehensive planning process. So things are going great. If you want to look at any of these in depth or have any questions about them, please do ask. We have done an awful lot of work on, in a major, just more areas than I thought possible, and the staff has really gotten behind a lot of this. Small businesses, we have SCORE coming in, they're starting a new program series. We just have, we have a couple of wonderful adult and teen services librarians really taking a lead on that. You know, we're working to feed up our PSL, the Adult Literacy Components, which so many different aspects of the entire staff is really all coming together to work on different aspects of this. And so it's really great to see it be a living document and making visible progress in so many areas. So, um, and in case you didn't notice them, in the various action plan items are both finishing bathrooms and doing the lighting improvements, but not just on the second floor, throughout the entire building, public areas. So kudos to Ian for helping us out on that, and you may have noticed, or may not have, he is working on that LED retrofit of the lobby lighting, and being able to retrofit those fixtures will help us be able to do that upgrade cost-effectively and much more quickly than we had anticipated, so.
Great. You know, just a comment, when we started the strategic planning process, I think this is all what we had in mind, we had a nice roadmap, we didn't put the problem to community, we didn't spread, now we get that update to see the progress into document, because I've seen it in organizations where they, they don't take time to then just kind of share where they're at, but a lot of the work is gone, and it's all macked together, and hopefully we will show them the impact we're looking for. But I do have a question, is there any areas you're concerned about kind of being a frontier into our strategy that's kind of maybe a little bit behind? Is anything that, that jumps out at you?
Actually, the, the community engagement and partnerships piece, because of the timing of losing Melissa as our Public Relations Manager, and the timetable of making the decision to, to do a very different kind of position and make some changes in that department, we may wind up a little behind in some of those. Chris, our Communications Coordinator, has been amazing. She has actually started attending a, and actually helped to revitalize a kind of Communications Officer's Roundtable for all of the government entities. It had kind of gone defunct, and she helped to bring it back, and so now they're meeting regularly again, so that we are making progress just in ways that we hadn't expected.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for this.
I don't know if I should leave that dark for this time being or not, yeah, okay, but we'll bring this back for another minute till we get to the financial pieces.
We have about two-thirds of the way through, or, uh-
And your eyes started crossing.
I go over the first.
Thank you very much. Um, any additional comments on the strategic plan? Thank you. Um, we're now on to Agenda Item Eight B, the 2019 Salary Schedule.
And so, again, this is no change from the previous year, we, the comparison, were included in last month's packet, and again, in this month's packet, just to kind of show you where we're at. We do plan to do the full compensation system review in 2019, that is, in the budget, the consultant to help us with that, and really look at, at all of our compensation, oh, as a larger system, and to really look at how, what our job descriptions look like, how they're scored, how we put them into pay grades, how we do our benchmarking to find those pay grades, and then how we go about giving people great work, and the system for that, including benefits, and one of the things that I am going to include in that review is also a benefits, a salary and benefits survey for staff, so that we can get a better handle on what our staff want and need out of their compensation package. And so I think that will help us to better understand what our staff is looking for, and to have a better handle over our, on best practices to do this moving forward.
What, what do you think the timing of the study, is it calendar year 2019?
Yes, calendar 2019. It is my intention to get that started right away, because I would like to have the results of that, that well in time for the board's budget process for 2020. So by this time next year, we should have all of that information in. But the, my recommendation for now is to leave the, um, the salary schedule the same as 2018. Um, we did have the, for those at the top of their salary range, to have the ability to give that increment at the end of the year for good performance. I would like to keep that increment in the budget and keep that concept, with the acknowledgement that that may change based on the recommendations of the 2019 compensation review.
And I, and I, and I'll, I think, repeat what I said maybe a year ago, which was, I, I do, you know, obviously wouldn't prefer that people fit within, sort of neatly within the range that's been designated, but I think, given that this is essentially a study that we're looking to do in 2019, and it's a relatively, and it's a nominal amount in the big scheme of things, I think that I would be supportive of moving forward with the salary schedule as it is. I agree. Any other thoughts or comments?
Only that I'm thrilled to hear that we're going to do a telecom comprehensive, very comprehensive study, and I think, um, I can remember once before that was done a long time ago, and, uh, and it was very helpful at the time, but I'm through to directors since then, and, um, I'm not sure how closely we're following it, or if it even exists anywhere in a file somewhere at this point, but I think it's, it's time we're going to keep our good staff, reward them, and I'm pleased to hear that we're going to ask them for some info also.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the 2019 Salary Schedule?
Sorry?
All right. We have a motion to approve the 2019 Salary Schedule as presented, that has been seconded. I think we should have a roll call on this, given that-
Not serious. Sure. Trustee Earl.
Yes.
Trustee Edlin.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes. Yes. Thank you very much. The 2019 Salary Schedule has been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item Eight C, the 2018 Capital Needs Assessment Projects Update.
All right, and I apologize, though one with the pretty colors that was on the big paper in the actual capital needs assessment did not print out pretty in your board packets, but all of the information is there. If you want a copy of the actual spreadsheet, or if you'd like me to print it out for you on the big paper, I will do that, but it, what that really does is just feeds into that brief list that I made, the 2019 summary that shows the changes and the reorder, the most significant of which is the 2019 project of RTUs and control unit that would also include the boilers now.
Did we, and I, and I'm assuming we did this, but I just, I just don't remember, did we have a formal approval of this at some previous point, kind of the whole schedule like this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, when we did the, the capital needs assessment, so, um-
Because my, my-
Whether, at this point, because there is a significant budget impact to the 2019 change, I think that it would be cleanest if the board does approve the update, so that then we can post that with the capital needs assessment on our website, so that we're being completely transparent with people. This is, you know, this was the original, here's what we updated into.
Yeah. Yeah. I think there was language in there that the schedule was estimate.
Yes.
I hope it was changed, I remember specifically-
Yes.
About the roof, that that could maybe be brought in, and it's like it's all instead of 2021.
Yep, so far, so good. Fingers crossed.
So I think I remember that conversation, I think it's documented to that 2020. No, I didn't remember if we had, if we had gone through a formal approval process, and if we did, I think it's clear that we should, we should also formally approve the update as well.
Do you want to approve the entire update, or are you talking about just moving on with?
Oh, no, I think that the, I think what we're, yeah, we're looking to approve this revised, updated schedule-
Reordered projects at estimated cost.
Yeah, through 2020. Yeah, yeah. I was so moved. Let me do this.
When we say approve, maybe, I guess, I'm, I'm accepting the information as it is, I'm not approving the expenditure. There's a slight difference there, that's all.
You're voting on the plan.
Yeah. I'm voting that the information that was presented may or may not be one public. I am not voting that this will be the actual increment of the expenditure. What can we vote to just accept it, rather than approve it?
I can, I would move that we accept this as a planning document-
Yes.
With the modifications estimate.
Okay. We have a motion that has been seconded to accept, as Dave presented, the 2018 Capital Needs Assessments Project. Motion has been, well, I think this should be a roll call as well.
Trustee Earl.
Yes.
Trustee Edlin.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
President Greer.
Yes, thank you very much.
And again, living documents, we are, we're keeping them updated, we're trying to, to make sure that we've got the best information at every stage along the way.
We are now on to Agenda Item Eight D, 2019 Preliminary Budget Draft. Do you want to get started, Julie?
This is the fun stuff.
Yes.
So-
Mr. Bruce here.
Forty-four.
Thank you. There you go. All right, so, um, you have in your packets, uh, all of this information, it's also posted on our website, for those of you following along at home, the expenses for this budget. I did run the expenditures budget, there is only a single draft in this packet for you. We went through our planning process with our management team, and I, we were able to somehow hewer in both a 3 percent increase to wage and salary lines, and the changes to our benefit premiums, with the, with also having a significant decrease in our Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund rate. We were still able to bring in this budget at just $11,500 over last year's expenditure budget. So that there are some really great cost savings that we were able to realize, we've made some significant changes on the staffing side, as the staffing report that's also in your packets reflects, we've taken to looking at every single, um, every opportunity to double check that the jobs that are being posted are the right jobs for now. The biggest changes on the expenditure side did actually, outside of personnel lines, the single largest change in the expenditures budget is actually in printing, and that is almost $7,000 in order to expand our discoveries newsletter from eight pages to 12 pages. We have so much great content, so many wonderful programs going on, and so many wonderful things to tell our community, that we need more space to do it. And Chris Neils, our Communications Coordinator, did another survey about how people get information about the library and its programs, and the discoveries newsletter is still our number one, number one source, and that's bulk mail to every household in our village, so it's a great bag for our buck, the change does not change the postage.
I just also say-
Great.
So, that, so those are the two biggies. Everything else is really very small. On, if you have any questions, we did add the subscription for the patron incident tracking software, which is a new piece of software for us, and we did include in the Library Capital Replacement Fund, we did actually call it out, and I know that you were interested in this last year, because it kind of, the expenditures for the capital project kind of got buried in, in all the papers for the budget, and we really concentrated on the library fund, so I wanted to make sure that we called that out, so it, it is there for you in this one, and that does include the rooftop units, the boilers, and the balancing. On the revenue side, I gave you two different drafts, and the difference between them is the levy, and it's whetherly, it's how we fund the costs that have been presented. So we have the operating fund that is at pretty much a flat budget, and then we have our Library Capital Replacement Fund, which is, also comes to that flat 350, just using that going forward, we'll get to where we need to be. So I went, and the two estimates, the two drafts that I gave you are- are doing the whole, funding the whole thing with the levy and other sources of revenues, but 96% of our revenue is the levy still. Or using the fund balance, keeping the levy left, our operating expenses, utilizing our fund balance, which we can do this year and still remain at the operating reserve amount called for in our finance policy. So if we go on this maximum side, if we pay for all of the operating fund and all of the library capital replacement fund through revenues for this year, the levy amount is $5,574,600, which is an estimated, now bear in mind, I'm using a 1% EAB increase. The average over the last three years has been about a 5% increase. However, we don't have that estimate from the townships in the village yet, so we are going with the 1% because that's playing it safe. That's even what the financial advisor used. So.
When do we get that updated number?
Usually, so, right around now. So usually early August is the latest written in July, so just waiting for that to come.
I recall we used to always have it before we, we did this all later.
Yeah, the last two years, we did do our budget cycle a little bit later so we had a little bit more current information. So in the financial management plan, their estimate had been it would be about 11, 11 3/4% increase to the levy in order to fully fund. This puts us at 7.57% as a levy increase to fully fund what we need to put into the reserve for the capital projects as well as the operations. On the homeowner side, you can see that per 100,000 of valuation, your difference, even, oops, even between these, at the 7.5% increase, you're still talking $3.90 per 100,000 of valuation. So to your average homeowner, you're talking about $12. So that's at the high end. Then, the other side, we have this. This is a completely flat levy. At the flat level, because we did have growth in the EAB beyond what we had estimated last year, the, that the actual impact to taxpayers of a flat levy would be a reduction in their taxes. Now, it's only about a dollar and a half, but it's still a slight reduction per $100,000 of value. I gave you both of these ideas for revenue so that you could see what the two ends of the spectrum look like. Your decision on the levy can be either of these, anywhere in between, or something completely different.
Help me understand again how we went from 11% to 7%?
We, the EAB grew more.
That's the 1%?
Yes, the EAB grew more than we had expected, more than they had projected. And we have reduced the overall amount of, that we need to put into the capital fund due to the projects that Ian has already. We're already eating away at the size of that number that needs to be put into the capital replacement plan because we're doing projects in-house and taking them out of that.
So it's several.
Yes.
Things contributing.
Couple of excellent factors all working together.
Well, yeah. If the EAB went just 2%,
Yes.
probably down to about 5% or something.
Yes.
And I will just say from my perspective, I really appreciate the way that this was presented, giving us the two extremes and then, yeah, easy to understand. And also, I thought even beyond that, just the actual line items, this was, this was the third time that we've been, that I've been through this. And this was, I felt like, I felt the best about, you know, how it was presented. I felt, I mean, you could tell there was a lot of thought that went into it and so I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And I really feel like this was the first year that I really got to have a handle on the budget, being focused on the budget during the budget process. And to be able to make sure that I was able to present it to you in that more understandable way. And that's why it includes all of those descriptions of the line by line so that you know what we're talking about for each of those things. It's also helpful to me and our management team when they start looking at things going, what's in that line? They actually, several of them refer back to this document to make sure, oh, we charged that too.
The labels are not always informative.
I think what's interesting to me is it's a formula. And you, I think, did a great job of articulating how that formula works. Clearly, each variable that formula could go up, which makes that percentage larger. Or you could start to enumerate some of those pieces. So I'm actually glad to see a little bit more for staff as far as increases because the economy's good. And I think that's reflective of being close to the market and like keep our good staff. So that's wonderful, but yet we're able to find things to reduce. And probably equally as important is making sure we still have that capital fund, I'll just say, in a healthy state to take care of boilers and other things that are under the roof. So it seems like we're in pretty good shape.
This is, when I looked at this, I actually did go back to the August 18. I'm hoping that we can reach somewhat of a consensus this evening so that we don't need the August 18 meeting because this is in such good shape.
And I have to say that running that expenses budget through the first time and coming out at a flat budget, I was flabbergasted. Now, I knew, I knew that we have been consistently coming in under budget on our staffing lines in particular because of the changes that we've been making, but it really hadn't hit me just how big of a shift that we had made with that. And it's, it's been great to be able to look at that and know that we're hitting our targets as far as customer service is concerned and still able to bring this budget back at a flat budget for this year.
So and I think in past years, what we've done is, this is one year we went, I think, item by item. And I'm hoping we don't go that route this year. And then I think, but ultimately, I think the two main decisions, the two primary decisions are the staff raises, then ultimately the, just the increase in the levy. And so I think that, just based on your information, based on what I've, you know, I've researched this as well, I think that I'm supportive of a 3% increase. So I think that we can kind of move on from that particular point unless something dramatic changes. And it's not going the other way.
No, I'm supportive of that because what we're basically saying, you talk about 3% when you look at the bottom line, it's not 3%. And I mean, what we're saying is we're asking our staff to be more efficient.
Right.
To do better work and we need to support them in that.
Exactly.
And I think this is a wonderful way to do it. That's the direction we want to go. And it's also aligned with the projected colas and things like that. So I, I think that's kind of.
And so then the question.
Yes.
Yes, so. The, so then the other issue, this one's a little bit more, more of a, you know, you can have differences, I think, of opinion on 7.57 versus zero. And I will just say from my perspective of looking at this, I've studied this quite a sense way over the past, you know, few days since we received it. And from my perspective, we, I feel very comfortable with the 350,000 we're putting in each year. Though there is a point, there's maybe three or four years in where we get a little bit light. And so I don't want to, I want to be cognizant of that. That maybe we do need to put another 50, another 100 here and there in, into the capital replacement fund just to make sure that we're, that is healthy. The other piece of this that I, and there's a variety of angles you can look at this from, but when you look at the overall budget, and I think Julie, you've been saying this from the beginning when we found, we essentially take in property taxes and pay salaries, I mean, or personnel expenses.
Yeah, that's a whole.
The 70% of the cost essentially.
Yes.
And so if you are, if raises are 3%, that's essentially half of our budget, just the salary loss. We want to maintain a healthy capital replacement fund. I mean, that was kind of the number that I was settling in at as far as 3% raise, 3% increase in the levy. Not zero, not 7.57, 3%, 3% raise, 3% increase.
Sounds good. If it's doable under the. My, I don't know how to phrase this. I asked how did we get from 11% down to 7%? And the answer was several things, one of which was a 1A 1% EAB increase. And I want to do all of those other things, I think, to be good stewards. But my gut feel, more than my gut feel, my expectation is that we're going to see more than able to, at least three.
Okay, I agree.
I mean, I mean, you can just take a macro, look at the county and look at all cranes, you know? But you can also look at the numbers and see that we're, we have more than 1%. I think we can count on that. I don't object to counting a little bit on transferring, you know, I don't know how to put it, remaining budget.
Fund balances.
Fund balances, thank you, thank you. Fund balances. But I hate to get totally dependent on that because that sort of encourages fake budget.
Well, Dave, that's the reason why I wouldn't go to zero, because we could do zero. And that.
I don't want to go to zero.
Exactly.
I don't want. I like zero. Because it seems like the math formula works. And I think it does set a precedent that if we think that math formula works, then it works. And it's not every year right, it's not every year we plan out and we need that extra fund and we will do what's right. But I just have this issue with every year that I've been on this board, always trying to, let's say, go with sort of the maximum to keep building this fund.
No, and I, well, no, in my, my feeling on that, I like zero too. I mean, that's, that's, that's a good, that would be a great place to be. The, when I look at it, and clearly, clearly we can do that for 2019. But I'm looking at 2020.
2024, 2025.
And I, I think that there's, you know, there's these competing factors of, you know, trying to maintain a steady line. And also going back to what you said, Dave, I think it's, I think it'll be 3% or more, the increase in the EAB. If you look at the EAB long-term, I don't know what it is for 20 years, but I think that if we're at 3% or less, I mean, that's a, I like being under 3%, but I also recognize that raises should be 3%. That comprises a large portion of our budget. And so I think that the operating increase, I mean, we could go with like a 2.75 again and that would, and that would be fine. No, but I.
That would be our pay cut, based on the COLA projections.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't, I didn't mean.
Levy.
No, I'm worth beyond the raises, I think, at this point. The salaries is 3%.
I think salaries is a good.
Yes, it's, it's, it's just zero to 7.57. And so I, again, that's just the number that just, last year, it was 2.5 and 2.75 felt right. This year, it just seems like the numbers, it really makes sense and it's not, it's not getting us down to. I didn't like with the zero, us getting that close. It was, we had maybe like a $30,000 cushion in the library fund and that's, it was just a little bit closer than what I would have wanted to be at. So.
Because the operating reserve fund balance that is called for in our financial policy is at about $360,000. So this, the 0% levy takes us to a fund balance in that fund of 418 is estimated. And so I, yeah, that does, it brings you really close to that minimum fund balance.
And I think that if, for me, again, just looking at it from a big picture perspective, it's like, are you treating the people at the library the right way? Are you maintaining your facilities and setting aside money for the future? And then are you also, how do you fit within the community and, you know, what's going on around us? And I think that the 3% just meets all of those objectives.
I still, I've never had anybody complain to me about library taxes. And I went back and looked over the years and, you know, our taxes for the library fluctuate, like maybe a dollar or two up, and, you know, we've gone, we've gone down sometimes five dollars. But it's not that, if you ask somebody what, you know, how, what's happening with the library, they would never hear. It just, it's not a large amount of money.
So should we raise more money?
It's not, it's not, no.
Well, that's the argument to that point, right?
It's security for the library.
But I think the formula, we're doing the right thing to make sure that formula is balanced.
Yeah, that's why, that's, and I think I'm, maybe in quick words, I, I'm not quite there with 0%. And so that's, I think we, I mean, we clearly, based on the numbers, like for 2019, we can do it. But I do, I, and it makes me, there's some concern for 2020. Do we have to go up by 5% in 2020 because we held it zero? And I think, and the argument, we have to go to 5%, we'll go to 5%.
That's right.
The whole thing really comes down to your comfort level for the levy and for those fund balances. This board has done its due diligence as far as planning and going through, doing a strategic plan, doing the capital needs assessment, doing the financial management plan, really kind of laying out what we need to do in the long term. And so it's, it comes down to your comfort as the trustees and what works for you.
Well, especially after hearing Jonathan's analysis, I do feel, the word comfort is a little troubling, but I do feel some comfort in the, in the 3% range. I feel quite a bit of stress at the 1% or 0%. While I think that could be, could be seen as a goal, I think considering the relatively small numbers we're talking about here, factor in a little bit of what Susan said. I agree with you. I don't, I don't say, well, we'll just raise it as much as we want because nobody notices.
Nobody wants.
I don't believe that's what she says.
I remember speech with the mayor, by the way, having that kind of strong voice on our management levy, so.
But I could support the 3%, 33.
Right, it's easy to remember too.
It's easy to remember.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, just reiterating, I mean, I, there's, I've got an accounting background. And I, and I, and I will say, just reiterating, I mean, I, there's, I've got an accounting background. I'm through these, I mean, I feel comfortable now, as I said, with, with this range. And it being a sustainable, I mean, this is a sustainable, I think, budget for 2019. So do we, do we, I mean, are we, is it too early to actually, do we need to wait?
You do not have to wait. You can approve if you're ready to approve. You can approve just the expenditures budget for 2019 at this point and give me guidance on what to bring back to you on the revenue side for next time. You can give me direction and say that you would like the three percent levy and will approve. Because I haven't run the numbers, I don't want to say an actual levy dollar amount tonight because I want to double check.
Let's, let's wait, let's wait until, if, if it's okay, if, and we'll, we'll get to this.
Salary, we do the salary.
Um, I think I would just rather do it all together.
Okay.
What would be our timetable then?
So the, um, this actually leads us to, so we'll, we'll table, I guess, any approval of A D until the next meeting, whenever that might be, which is what we're getting to at A E. Which I think that, I, I, I don't think we need an August 8, an additional budget meeting based on just what we've discussed this evening and the great work that Julie did to get us. So we didn't have to.
Yeah.
Can I change my airplane, say that?
No, no, we're good.
So the, um, so on A E, this is the August meeting dates. And I think that the regularly scheduled meeting is for August 22nd.
Yes.
I think that staff would prefer that it be on August 29th. And I am okay with August 29th.
Our administrative assistant was the one who entered all of the invoices. Caitlin, obviously, and myself are all on vacation at some point in August before that meeting. I get back on the twentieth. Caitlin actually gets back the twenty second. So we were both like.
Well, District Eight starts on Thursday, so I, I'd love to be able to, yeah, do the prep work for the back to school.
And so I think that would be.
Twenty, twenty-third.
I missed that.
Twenty-third.
So I think the idea would be that if, if we approve, but moving the date, we would move it to August 22nd, which I think we are moving, based on Caitlin's schedule.
Twenty-nine.
Or twenty-nine, move it from the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth.
And is there a downside? Do we lose anybody?
Not that we know of. Kim, Kim indicated, I believe, that she could do either of those.
The year for what's worth A B.
Yes.
Because I'm moving to Puerto Rico on the twenty-second.
Yes, I think we actually wind up with a full board on the twenty-ninth rather than one down on the twenty-second.
So do we have, once, once everyone maybe double checks their calendars, I think we would have to make a motion to move the meeting date.
Yeah, that's the right idea.
To August 29th.
And cancel the budget workshop meeting originally scheduled for September and then September 12th and then moved to August 8th and now just not having.
We never officially moved it to August 8th.
We're just canceled, maybe we just.
I would, I would move that we cancel the previously scheduled September 12th budget meeting and move the regular August meeting from August 22nd to 29th.
We have a second. We have a motion to move the August meeting date to August 29th and cancel the previously scheduled budget meeting that has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have moved the August meeting date to August 29th and canceled the budget meeting. That was great. We are now on to agenda item number nine, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business in the field? And the library director's report.
Um, most of what I did this month was wrapped around budget and anything pretending in this packet. We are working on getting that job ad together for the community engagement coordinator position. That position will not have supervisory or management responsibilities. However, it is very much about community partnerships and getting out and, and talking to folks, being the face of the library in the community and that outreach component. So if anyone knows of anyone who would be a good fit, we are hoping to have that posted on Friday. It requires experience typically acquired through a bachelor's degree in communications, public relations or related fields. So we're hopeful that we find a person who is an excellent fit for that position. In making that change, we are also moving the communications coordinator and changing the title of staff artist back to graphics and display coordinator at the request of the person in that position. That was her previous title and she liked it better. They will all be moving to be directly supervised by assistant director Jen Frederick. We're making this change right about the same time that Amy Prechul will be coming on as the access services manager and Jen will finally be able to hand that department off one hundred percent and hopefully create the capacity for her to directly supervise some other folks.
Ask a question. There are some out of order. Okay. Where do we normally find people for the public relations manager position? The reason I ask is there are a bunch of us sitting at the table who know a lot of people, but I, I don't. If, if I knew where they came from regularly, I might look a little bit in those areas and see if I see somebody. I gotta, did they come from the library world or?
Well, frankly, I've never hired for this position. The public relations manager, Melissa Doran-Boss was actually hired in, not as a manager. Caitlin, do you remember her original title?
She was coming in, in as a, in as what we're hiring now.
I mean, it was essentially, right, because I thought, I mean, there was not a PR department and she was a part of admin as it's going to become, yeah. And so she, there was no need for a manager role. I don't know the exact title she had. But it was very similar, yeah.
Where did she come from?
Especially intern here when she was in college. And then the position, they needed someone in that kind of communications position and she already had.
Very, very, here in New.
Kind of came from the library world.
There are a lot of people. Well, actually, no, she was like a communications and marketing.
I, I think this is a huge major now in college. There's a lot of, a lot of kids coming out of college with this major, so.
That's sort of what I suspect. My point is that, that we need to advertise for this position using some non-traditional.
And this, this will be one that we hit hard with social media. And particularly asking our, my plan was to ask our managerial staff and other staff to repost things like LinkedIn to their networks about this position is open. This is a great, I mean, we're.
A little analogies in the area, both central and first I C.
We haven't, but we've put.
I have to do a point. I was thinking of that all versus a huge problem. It's assumed at other schools and there are.
There might be somebody who would be terrific who just hadn't really thought about working for the library.
Obviously, interestingly, I didn't realize Melissa had been an intern here. She's really only PR manager, never had actually.
Yeah, it's created.
I don't know where that's just, just. Can you send, once the posting is ready, just maybe out to the board?
And then you can work your own networks.
Yeah.
And let's see, continuing along, the Lira insurance pool, we've got that increment in our budget for the insurances this time around. We are getting some extra perks from our carriers through Lira now. And we're looking forward to having that additional online staff training available. It's great to have more resources that staff can use anytime to deep up their training, particularly when you look back at the strategic plan, action items about staff and continuing education. Having a wider variety of tools readily available is a fantastic thing. So we're really looking forward to that. And Ian is going great guns on the next round of lighting projects, those lobby LEDs. So he is, he's just been phenomenal and we've had to, we're, we have to take deep breaths and make sure he paces himself. But next, he's got another project on his agenda following that, and that's in the kids' room. We're going to be doing some relocation of some shelving within the kids' room. Just kind of moving things around and, and kind of reconfiguring the A B area and the area directly in front of the study rooms there. So looking forward to doing a lot of really awesome changes and, and.
Can you do brobain?
Oh, okay. This poor, this poor man, he has given a little bit of everything he has just been facing.
Because she never filled a boiler.
Oh, and that is, thank you for reminding me. That's the one thing that I do want to bring to your attention though, in our discussions along the way with John Shales and Jason, who is our construction manager at Shales McNutt, about our project for 2019. If we want to be on the leading edge of projects in the spring for 2019 for rooftop units and boilers, the lead time on those units can be twelve to sixteen weeks. So their advice is to, is to have that project out to bid and the bids received before the end of calendar eighteen. Whether we award the bids in December or award the bids in January, not so big of a deal, but to have those back before the, the Christmas holiday. And to that end, we are having initial meetings with Alara, which is our mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineering. They're the ones who did the capital needs assessment, that portion on the HVAC and all of it. For them to do basically what the construction manager is doing on this project, to do bid specifications, to qualify the bidders, handle the, the bid process and make the recommendation and oversee the project. So you'll probably see something like a, a contract with them coming through that quote sometime in the fall and then moving right along into that project to get it moving forward so that we can keep that timetable.
Yeah, I would strongly support that. Everybody wants to install boilers and air conditioners in April.
Yeah. And, and we want to be the first on that list.
And the last on that list pays more.
Exactly.
So we can save money by being.
So she was a terrorist.
Oh, God.
All right, any, was, were you?
Oh, that was, that's poison, I guess.
Okay. We are now on to trustee comments and requests for information. Any trustee comments or requests for information?
We have plenty of information.
All right, we have, we have completed the agenda and I hereby adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.